So I hope you all can see in your screen, I'm not the technology guru here running teams. I know how to navigate through, but I just started to record. I believe you should see the top left quarter of your screen that we're recording.
Kevin, your audio is going in and out for me.
Did that make any difference, my change right now?
That's much better.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. I'm preparing to share my screen. I believe I am sharing as a presenter right now. Can anybody confirm that they can see a cover page that says Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Atlantic City?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, great. If everybody's okay and can hear me and can see, I'm gonna get started.
Good. All good.
All right, great. Thank you very much. So I appreciate everybody jumping on. This is in regards to Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Atlantic City. We are coming up on our Title V air permit renewal. This is the public information session, and we'll move along through it. So this next slide just goes over basically everything we're gonna go over today. It'll talk on who the presenters are. We'll do a little introduction. We'll get to the public notification session guidelines and the protocols we're following. We will go through the purpose of this public information session. We will go over the Title V requirements and Hard Rock specific Title V permit. We'll also go over some other permits and just environmental stewardships, and then we'll close with public questions and comments, and it's just a brief agenda. So I will be your presenter from Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Atlantic City. I am the director of facilities here. I am the responsible official when it comes to the person on the property that deals with DEP, air compliance, pretty much everything DEP and EPA related. Bridget Ansack is from Arcadis. She is a consultant of ours at Hard Rock. Bridget prepares all of our paperwork for our Title V submissions, for our reporting, for our documentation. She basically takes all the information that comes from our building and she prepares it and presents it to DEP as an outside consultant. So she'll go over a couple slides that are more in-depth about Title V and the air permit and more in the DEP end and the more in her ballyhoo than mine. I'm gonna go over the building specifics. So it's just a little brief background about our property, what we do, who we are. Hard Rock Atlantic City is set on over 17 acres of land. We're right on the boardwalk, Uptown Atlantic City. We have a 4 million square foot music-inspired property that we have it all to provide to our guests. We're a casino with casino games. We have a sports book. We do a lot of entertainment at two different venues. One-of-a-kind, award-winning restaurants and amenities and luxe accommodations. Hard Rock Atlantic City presents world-class entertainment at the 5,500-seat Hard Rock Live Attest Arena. We also have another venue that has 1,300 seats, and that's in our Sound Waves Theater and 365 live stages. We offer entertainment seven days a week throughout the year in an unparalleled commitment to entertainment. We are Atlantic City's premier entertainment destination. We have 3,600 team members or employees here at Hard Rock. 23% of our 3,600 employees are Atlantic City residents, and 89% of those 3,600 employees are Atlantic County residents. Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Atlantic City has donated over $1 million to local charities and organizations since we've opened in 2018. Over 500 organizations have been touched through financial donations, in-kind gifts, as well as team member volunteer efforts. Philanthropy is our soul, and Hard Rock's corporate commitment to support the community is one of the company's core pillars. Most recently, on July 28th, Hard Rock Atlantic City donated $100,000 to five local charities making their fifth anniversary celebration. The public notification portion, we gave notice of this public information session. It was posted over 30 days ago in the Atlantic City Press and on the Environmental Justice Calendar of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the New Jersey DEP. It shows a website there, and we're copying this, so you'll be able to get that. We can send it to you as well. A copy of the Title V air permit renewal application has been made available at the Atlantic City Public Library. The one that's uptown, 1 North Tennessee Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey, 08401. A copy of the renewal application is also posted on the NJDEP website. Materials for this public information session were prepared by Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Atlantic City and its environmental professionals and reviewed by the NJDEP. All participants will be muted upon until called upon, which you all are already. I appreciate that. This public information session will be recorded and shared with the NJDEP. At the end of this public information session, attendees will be able to submit questions regarding the renewal application. Attendees who want to speak will be called upon in the order in which they raise their hand in the Zoom platform or may submit questions and comments via the chat box question-answer feature below. Attendees shall state their name, address, and affiliation, if any, for the record prior to stating their questions or comments related to the renewal application, and will be limited to three minutes each in order to ask questions or provide comments. Only spoken and written questions and comments from attendees will be permitted. Video screen sharing will not be permitted. Questions regarding the renewal application will be responded to in writing following the close of the public comment period, which will end 30 days from today. No questions or comments will be responded to during this session. Sorry, do I? We okay?
Yeah, I think I have slide seven, right?
Um, yes, yes, this is you, Bridget. I'm sorry.
Okay, nope, that's okay. The purpose of this session is that Hard Rock is currently renewing their Title V air permit for their facility that is located in Atlantic City, New Jersey. And in order to comply with the requirements of the Environmental Justice Law and Administrative Order 2021-25, Hard Rock is holding this public information session regarding the renewal of its Title V air permit. The purpose of the public information session is to provide information regarding the facility, its equipment, and the Title V renewal. It's an opportunity to engage with the community regarding the application and to respond to any questions from the community regarding the renewal application. Title V is a federal program that is designed to standardize air quality permits for facilities that are considered major sources across the US. A major facility is defined as a facility that has actual or potential air emissions above certain threshold amounts for certain criteria air pollutants. Major facilities are required to submit detailed applications to obtain their Title V permit and those applications are reviewed by both the NJDEP and the US EPA. The Title V permits are renewed every five years, and that gives an opportunity for those agencies to again review the information that's in the permit and make any updates that may be needed to comply with current regulations. And as part of the New Jersey's environmental justice requirements, major facilities that are located in overburdened communities are required to conduct a public information session to engage with the public. The NJDEP and the US EPA classify certain facilities as major, and they are subject to the Title V permits. Their major facilities have the potential to emit certain criteria pollutants above thresholds, and those include volatile organic compounds, also known as VOCs, nitrogen oxides, also known as NOx, carbon monoxide, known as CO, total suspended particulate, known as TSP, and then particulate matter less than 10 micron, also known as PM10. Hard Rock is considered a major facility, and they have operated under a Title V permit since 1999. The permit covers the following equipment. There are eight 29 million BTU per hour boilers. These boilers combust natural gas, but they also have the ability to combust number-two fuel oil if there is a natural gas curtailment. There are 10 emergency generators at the site, and the generators combust ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, and they are only operated for routine testing and maintenance and if there is a loss of power. And then finally, there are several fuel storage tanks that are used to hold the number-two fuel oil used by the boilers as well as the diesel fuel that is used by the generators. This slide gives a look at what the facility's actual emissions were during the 2022 calendar year versus what they were allowed to permit or allowed to emit under their permit. And as you can see, the actual emissions are approximately 25% of what they are allowed to emit, with NOx being the one contaminant that has the highest actual emissions and as well as the permitted emissions. It's essentially NOx that is over 25 tons per year and triggered the Title V requirement for the facility. This renewal application, known as BOP 230001, was submitted to the NJDEP on February 13th, 2023, and it was deemed administratively complete on February 14th, 2023. We are not requesting any changes to the permit as part of this renewal application, so therefore there are no additional or increased environmental impacts that would occur as a result of the renewal. Hard Rock strives to comply with emission requirements and reduce any potential environmental impacts. The facility has a strong history of regulatory compliance. This public information session is being presented on the Title V renewal application, and any questions that are received during this public information session or during the public comment period, which will end 30 days from today, will be responded to in writing, and we will work with the NJDEP to respond to any of those questions, and they will be posted to the NJDEP's website at the end of the comment period. Once the Environmental Justice Division has gone through and reviewed those questions and comments, they will provide them to New Jersey's Air Permit Quality Permitting Bureau, who will review those comments, and if there are any questions or things that need to be incorporated into the Title V permit, they will look to do that as part of the permit issuance. So the NJDEP can renew the permit with additional questions or additional conditions, or if there's any large objections, there is the potential for the application to be rejected.
I think we're back to you, Kevin. You're on mute.
Thank you very much. Showing my rust with the technology here. So Hard Rock's environmental stewardships, some things that we have that have nothing to do with this presentation, just something we thought we would throw in there to share. We do a beach cleanup annually. Hard Rock, we use our own team members, our own employees volunteer for an annual beach cleanup. We go as far as we can right in front of our property. We do that every year. We enjoy it. It's a good program. We initiated an oyster shell program, so believe it or not, oyster shells can be recycled, and we work with Stockton University. We recycle our oyster shells. We get them cleaned, and we return them to back to the shoreline, back to the bays and the estuaries for new habitats to improve water quality and help protect our shorelines. In 2022, we collected and supplied 41 tons of oyster shells. In 2023, to date, we're roughly 100 bins of shells. We're about 25,000 pounds of shells so far in 2023. Another program we have is we food waste recycle. Basically, what we do is food that doesn't get eaten in our employee dining room, in our prep kitchens. We have two different trash cans, and one is for your napkins or your paper cups or whatever you're gonna throw away, and one is for strictly food waste. We scrape our plates into a food can, and we have local pig farmers. They come over and pick them up, and they feed their pigs with them, and we just try to keep more trash out of the landfill. So that's just a couple of things that we work on here in Atlantic City. For the public questions and comments, you may submit questions regarding the renewal application by raising your hand in the Zoom platform, or you may submit questions or comments via the chat box question-and-answer feature below. You must state your name, address, and affiliation, if any. For the record, prior to asking your questions or comments related to the renewal application, you will be limited to three minutes in order to ask questions and provide comments. Only spoken and written comments, questions and comments will be permitted. Video screen sharing is not permitted. Written comments and questions can be emailed to p h n at H R H C A C dot com. Questions regarding the renewal application will be responded to in writing following the close of the public comment period, which will end 30 days from today. No questions or comments will be responded to during this session. Hard Rock appreciates your attendance and your participation. That rounds out our slide, our presentation. I believe this gives us, this is my first time going through this. I believe this is the portion where we would open the floor to any questions for anybody that wanted to raise any questions. We provided an email below where you can use the question-answer box if you want to be unanimous, but now is the time to open the floor to anybody that has any questions, concerns, or comments. As I stated earlier, I am recording this presentation as part of the process and procedure here. I'm showing 6:18 on my screen, unless anybody objects. I think it's probably fair to let it run for a little bit longer. Maybe we get to 6:25, or if you think longer, Melissa, please feel free to speak up if you think we should run longer, but I have no problem leaving it open to the floor.
I see that we have one guest here. Could we unmute them just to make sure that they don't have a comment?
I'm struggling myself here to see if I have them muted or if they're muted on their own.
Is that me with the misspelled name?
I know that voice.
You do. I do not have any comments.
Thank you very much. So Melissa, that was a Hard Rock employee. We know who that guest is, yes.
So let's leave it open until 6:30 just to see if anyone who registered attends a little late.
Perfect. No problem. Thank you.[1132.52]